I'd like to call this meeting of the Wausau Town Council to order. Would you please stand with us for the invocation and the laying standing for the Pigeon of Allegiance giving our invocation tonight is Reverend P.J. Pettijohn, pastor of Trinity Pentecostal Center down on Highway 77. And a long time, a tremendous hours, I had the privilege of being his grandparents pastor when his daddy was just a young man himself. And we're certainly glad he's also a part of the Bay County Sheriff's organization. We're glad to have you with us tonight if you would lead us in our invitation.
Good to be here. Would you bow with me tonight? Gracious heavenly Father, we love you. Lord, we thank you so much for all that you do for us, God. We thank you for the day, Lord, that you've given us. Father, we thank you for all of your many blessings. And Lord, we ask you, Lord, that you help us tonight, Lord, in this meeting, God, that you give us wisdom. Lord, your word tells us, Lord, that if we lack wisdom, that we can ask and that you will give it to us, Lord, as they this board discusses matters of importance for this community. Father, I ask you, Lord, that you guide them by your wisdom in your hand. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Slute, please. I believe we're the students of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have to look, you have to look. You're welcome to stay.
My wife's got dinner cooking, so I don't know.
It's great. We're off with you.
And my wife said I had to be through before too late. She's been on the road today and we need to go find some food today. Let me, before we get down with the agenda, we have invited now a number of our local pastors. I think I've used between Mrs. Homer's last few months in office and this past year, most of our local pastors. We've also used some people in the community. I've got a couple of former elected officers who are Christian and workers in their churches who will come in the next couple of months. But if any of you have someone that you would like for us to come, if I haven't invited someone from your church or something like that, you'd like for us to come and give our invitation to, let me know, I might contact them.
Call again, Carter.
Call again. Call again, Carter. Our attorney can't be with us today, so if we can get him on the phone, he's going to join us on the phone.
Hello, Mr. Carter.
This is Roger Hagan at the Town Council in Wausau. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Got you loud and clear. Can y'all hear me?
Can everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to lay you down here on the table. Don't go to sleep on us, okay?
I promise I won't. I'll keep my phone on the bump as you leave.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We all have the agenda and you've had an opportunity to look at it. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Are there any corrections to that? I see the minutes are not ready.
No, sir.
But the financial statements are ready and the Easter parade for April the ninth, were there some discussion on that at our meeting the other day? Is there any discussion before we vote on that? That's on Saturday, that's on Saturday prior to Easter.
Yes, sir.
On the Saturday week?
Saturday week.
Before.
Easter's on the 17th.
Yeah, that's the Saturday before the week of Easter.
Okay.
Okay.
I make that motion, you accept it.
Approve the agenda and that includes approving the prayer.
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second and discussion on the motion. How you vote, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Wies?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, that brings us down to the agenda audit and we don't have it on your, on your line there, but we talked about the Rogers family being able to meet with us today and they aren't here. And are you going to be spokesperson, you and I have spoken the most, but do?
I will be part of the spokesperson, yes.
Okay, all right. Why don't you come forward and I think you probably know everybody or know who they're related to.
Well, yeah. You know, first off, good evening. I appreciate the fact that y'all let me come before the council tonight. My name is Will Rogers. I'm here tonight with my cousins, Luneil Rogers, Mark, Jimmy Rogers, Wayne Carter, and my brother Dan. We're here tonight to offer the town of Wausau Rogers Square. We are five of the 17 grandkids of Buster and Molly Rogers. The five of us own Rogers Square and it's time for us to do something with it. We'd like to give it to the town of Wausau. The only thing we want back is in October, the second Sunday in October, we have a Rogers reunion. We would like to reserve that Sunday for the reunion. The Rogers Square comes with the facility, with 15 or 16 tables, with 40 or 50 chairs and the old pavilion. We want to reserve it for that weekend to have a reunion, the pavilion and tables and chairs. We would like that to be year after year free. The next thing would be a marker that goes out that says Buster and Molly Rogers Pavilion. Basically, that's it. We want to give it to you guys for the use for the county, I mean the town. We would highly suggest that it be incorporated into the use with the cemetery because it will be an asset to be used for that, for graveside and for other things. That's not a requirement. It'd be y'all's as when we give it to you, the two things that we want is, and they're very, those two are very important to us, that we be able to use it for our reunion that weekend and that a marker goes up. And y'all have anything to add or correct to that. We hope that you accept our offer. We would be pleased with that. Thank y'all.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Carter, was you able to hear that?
I was able to hear the bulk of it. Can you specify the request for me, Mr. Rogers?
Yes, sir. I don't know that we discussed this when you were here at one of our last meetings, but a pioneer family of our community owns a piece of property that is adjacent to our recreation center already, the Apostle Palace and the adjacent grounds. And it's been used, it was their grandparents' home. And the home is gone and the family built a pavilion, an open pavilion, but it has a portion of it that is sealed and walled up. It has a stove, hot water heater, microwave, 16 chairs, about 50 folding, I'm sorry, 16 tables and about 50 folding chairs. And as they, as they have grown older in the maintenance, whatever, they want to give it to the city. It's something we could use for a community center or those kinds of, those kinds of activities. The only request they have is that as we are prone to rent out our city hall or Apostle Palace, they would like to reserve the second weekend in October at no cost. That's when they have their family reunion, they like to have that tent yet and would like for us to install a plaque that dedicates it to their grandparents. It comes at no cost to the city as it is. If there's, if there's maintenance or a development plan, of course, that would be ours, but they are wanting to offer, there's probably two or three city lots on that, on that piece of property. I can't tell you how big it is, probably a quarter of an acre maybe in size, and it has a building on it. Concrete floor, metal top, and one end of it, see what else could be a kitchenette.
Two baths. Got you.
And two bathrooms.
I may recall the council talking about that in a prior meeting. That's a very generous offer. And the question for me is, is all this permissible? It is, and I don't see any trouble at all with reserving that time for their family gathering and angeling. And again, what a generous offer for the city, so what other questions can I answer for y'all?
I think that's it. I think our concern is, the family is a fairly large family. They're down to the grandchildren generation and this certainly did the grace and all that. And we need this to be, we want this reservation to be in perpetuity as long as the family chooses to use it. If they should sometime another say that the family's just diminished or scattered to the point that they no longer are having reunions, but I don't see that being in any of our lifetimes hardly. I don't see that being an issue. So they, if that's, if that's not a problem, I don't have a question. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the council?
You might like to know it's on the corner of Highway 77 and Buster Rogers Moonward.
Yes, yes.
Put it in perspective geographically.
This, this family has their steep roots here. Actually, the street that's beside it has already been named after the grandfather and it's, it's adjacent at the right way that joins that street, Jefferson Avenue and the Apostle Palace properties. So we just need a motion from, from the council to accept this and then work out deeds and things like that with you, preparation of deeds and acceptance and things like that.
Yes, sir. I've said that the land's all owned, free and clear, is that correct? No lending or anything to worry about, we're just looking at quick plan dating.
I'll let it be. We give the quick thing, there's no problem.
Okay, he said it is all free and clear.
It's clear.
There's no incomers on the property.
Very good, very good. Yes, sir. Y'all get a motion and a vote, we proceed from there.
The deed started out and it's survivor's shield, so there was nine or 10 of us on it, but it walked right down to this five. And we've already had some passed, so we know that that's accurately done. So it is just those five left that started it and so the deed will be cleared and that's the five that we'll be dealing with.
Mr. Carter, Mr. Rogers has said that this deed started out as a survivor's shield and it's down to five and all five of the survivors are present tonight and they are all in agreement with this action. I'm not altogether, I think I've heard this, but I'm altogether how survivor's ship works, but if we put Mr. Rogers in touch with you or you with him, we could work out, that deed's probably filed at our courthouse in, appears it there.
Yeah.
Okay, we'd like to just get you, we'd like to get you a copy of the deed and go from there.
We can do this that way and if it's hard, we might give you like a marshal numbers. That would be a way that I could pull it up and I could pull the deeds too, if that makes it easier, remember.
I'll get them to you next week.
It will make it much easier for the gentleman.
All right, I'll have to do that.
Any other questions from the council? What's the place of the council?
I vote we accept.
We got a motion and we have a motion and a second. If we accept the offer of Rogers Square and with all the stipulations that Mr. Rogers presented to us, is there any discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Wies?
Yes.
Ms. Woxnann?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I think this is a, I think this is a very generous offer and Will and I, Will first approached me this probably six months ago, something back while I was over, having some service on the car. And this, this is not out of character of the Rogers family. They have always given back to this community. We got, we got a half a dozen families that goes really deep here and none of them ever forgot where their roots from. It was 20, in your family, 21, and they may be scattered all over the place, but they all know where Wausau is.
That's right.
They continue to come back to Will, Dan, Jimmy, Wayne. Thank you everyone for your generous offering and accepted. And we'll be in touch with you as soon as deeds prepared and things like that.
Yes, we are very thrilled that you did. It was, I told them and I think we saw it all on the same page, it's the right thing to do, but it hurts here. We put, we put a lot of work, we as a bunch of cousins built that thing back in 87 and 88. So there's a lot of heart in it. We got reacquainted during that time, but none of us live here, you know. A few of us family lives here and some of them live here, but the rest of us might come back on the hill.
Yeah.
But we don't move back, you know.
We all bring our hickstones up there.
We might come back to the hill, but that's the only way. We've established too many rules in our local communities, but we appreciate y'all. We will support this community as much as we can and always have hope with you.
Yes, and we can talk about a development plan for the properties and plans.
You don't need us anymore?
We don't need you for that.
We're going to go home and.
Now, good luck and be safe.
Thank all of you for coming. If you want to.
We certainly appreciate y'all's reaction to this.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Get my brother out of here.
His wife runs all the weeds and.
Good evening. Thank y'all.
Thank you, yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
She's untied now. She's tripping now.
Girlfriend thing about me.
Oh, well. I'll let your wife take care of that when you go outside.
I got a good feeling. How you doing?
You need some gas.
Thank y'all. We got, we had a good load of each other for a week.
Yeah. Right. I didn't say any discussion, I can get that on board. I don't have any discussion, just two things. Just to give y'all a little bit of niggling once later and things like that. So that brings us down to, to business from the workshop.
You asked me to agenda and phone for the maintenance employees. The best plan we can find is with Cricket. This is unlimited cost tags and data. We get two phones for $80. That's with their contract. And it's $80 a month for the service. So the upfront, the first month will be $160.
It's $80 a month for two?
For two, yes, sir.
Or it's $160?
No. Two phones for $80 and monthly service is $80 for two phones.
So the two phones is going to be $160.
To start with and then it'll be $80 a month.
$80 for service for both of them.
Yes.
Average $40 each.
Yeah, and my opinion, that's a, it's needed. Dallas has to come by, it comes off, you know, five or six times a day to check in and see if we got anything or we have to get out and go ride and hunt him down.
Yeah. And I think it's, I think it's good, you know, we had the same discussion, you, probably you and I were the two that was on the council and we thought, some of us thought that we ought to provide phones and others, well, everybody wants to use their own because they have people on calling. Is that still a concern of any of us or are we, will you use these calls to call random or take calls from family to public and things like that?
I'm sure they take from the public and the family, you know, just to follow that.
There's one thing I think we do know, we're not going to be out there waiting to know what to do.
Some of them.
It's a trust.
Yeah, some of them.
It's unlimited and it's just a trust back to the, this is a business bond.
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I made a motion, we purchase what Margaret has just got through telling us and.
To phones and services.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion with two phones and services for our employees. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. How you vote, Ms. Wies?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Has anybody used these phones, this Cricket stuff?
Robert does. She's really pleased that she has it.
Okay, I just didn't know.
See, I got the Cricket right there and it ain't too good, but that's okay. That'll help you use it. It'll be fine. I forget that song, so.
Yeah, I've used Spring and I've used Verizon, but I haven't, no record.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, yes.
And the chair votes yes.
All right. When Mr. Wheeler was here last week, he said he would provide us with an agreement that wasn't going to, you know, break us or anything like that. I have this agreement, but I just got this agreement tonight or just a little while ago. I would like to email it to all of y'all and let y'all look at this and this is not going to affect until June of '22. So, but you know, for the project manager, if we use them, $160 an hour. Environmental specialist, $110. Mid-level engineer, $140.
About that.
Their difference are cheap and our difference are cheap as it, but it's a good contract. I've sent it to Jeff already. He's going to review it also and so, and then give us his opinion on it before next month's meeting. But I will email this to all of y'all and let y'all go over it and Jeff will have his opinion on it, but.
And I can't, I can't speak for Mr. Parker, but we probably have a contract similar to this somewhere with our engineer and I suspect that our engineer give almost as much free to book the county and the city as he charges us for.
He's very proud when he gets paid.
Yeah, yeah.
When he's wrote all these payments for those.
Yeah, these figures sounds about like what the going rates for a professional is.
And will they ever charge us that or not, you know?
Yeah, that will be, to be determined. And if they charge us one, we want to pay them a little bit, usually.
I can't comment to everybody on that. I've seen these with other municipalities and counties and it does, what I'm seeing here, it looks like there's standard agreement. If that helps and the rates are consistent like Mr. Rogers notes out.
So what do we want to do with, I have sent the contract and actually I wonder, when we do send it, I'm going to take Mr. Carter's advice, but do we want her to send that to each of us and take a look at it or?
Absolutely.
How do we refer that?
He said absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, but is that good with everybody? Does she send it to us and we take a look at it? And if it's going to want to go into effect in June, we'll have time next month to.
And I was going to print it out, but this was like 39 pages and their agreement with the county that we're piggybacking on is 140 pages, so I didn't print it out for you. I will email it to you.
Same amount of 39 pages.
You have been so kind to me already.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. You asked me to agenda the debit card for the town, for one of, just one of the general fund account for the town to stay in the office and to be checked out if needed.
We have just one card.
One card, then it stays in there if you need to check it out or bring what they need to purchase.
Or have a sign in and a sign out.
Sign in and sign out.
Sign out sheet, yeah.
But it stays in the.
In the office.
Expensive to have here. Sounds good. My, my concern is debit versus credit. That debit takes it out right then and, and I don't think the city probably is having to beat, beat something to the bank, but.
Not yet.
It'd be, I think a card's a good thing. I just don't know if we can do a credit card and let it.
Capital City Bank's got a, Capital City Bank's got a real good deal on credit cards right now too, if you want to versus this.
Does one of them cost us more than, does one of them cost us more than the other to have a debit or a credit?
A debit, so it doesn't cost you anything.
Okay.
The credit will, may have an annual fee on it, I don't know.
With the debit card, when it comes out, you'll get a notice of it right then and there.
Yeah, they'll notice it, yeah. We do online banking, it comes out right then and there.
And you'll get it.
Mm-hmm.
You'll get a copy of the bill or.
Yeah, you'll get a transaction, yeah. You'll get a copy of the transaction, where it went to and they have to bring in a.
Receipt.
Envelope, receipt, yes.
So then the month you get the same thing you would with a credit card.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, and my fear, debit card is that personal expresso they, I use it, they take my money out, give the receipt, it falls down on the truck seat or something like that and I forget to take it out.
Well, then it comes straight to Margaret, it won't fall from the truck seat.
Yeah. It won't leave the bill, should leave the bill as usual.
Should leave the bill, should have it on record.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not posing either one. I just, plus, plus, I think having a card is, sometimes that's going to be, to some people, if we don't have a camera, we've got to take a check with us and then somebody got to do it out or some things like that.
And a lot of times they won't take those checks now, you know. They don't like to take those checks out, especially online, you know. Like we're trying to order those little hot water heaters to go in those bathrooms and we've got to order those from walmart.com, but they won't take our Walmart card online. It has to be used at, at Sam's or Walmart's, you know. Yeah, they don't take off this community card, you know, for businesses, so.
Okay, what's the place on debit card?
I think it's a good idea because I know I've had a couple of people come to me and tell me they can't get off in time, you know.
Oh, no, we don't, we don't, like this is a debit card that the town uses.
Oh, the same for the water?
No, it's on down the next line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is where we're buying.
Oh, okay.
This is where we can send it with Tim or.
Steve or someone.
According to Steve, Tim, Steve or Dallas.
If we go to Harbor Freight to get anything that we might need, we have to take Steve with us because he has to count and we can go anywhere. But then there's a lot of checks wrote to Steve Hallmark and a lot of people question, why is this check wrote to Steve Hallmark? And they won't need to come, you know.
And that's one thing I really don't like, though.
We don't like it.
But there's too many, once in a while we've had to do like at the church, our church secretary be supplying something like that and then she gets it, brings the check and we receive, always a couple of seasons like that. But this, this paying and expecting reimbursement or paying and proven reimbursement and we don't do it if you don't have the receipt. So if you come in one day, say, I bought y'all a pump at Harbor Freight and I lost the receipt.
Oh, I get an email, you know.
Yeah, well, I'm sure there's ways. I'm just telling all bases of things, what could go wrong.
Oh, yeah. I was just, I've been helping you.
Everybody, everybody don't have an account. Suppose, suppose I went there and I'm.
I'll give you my credit card. I got a Harbor Freight credit card.
Okay, so what's her, what's her?
I make a motion to accept the debit card.
The debit card. Do we have a motion or a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Do we apply for a debit card if this is Will?
Capital City Bank, State Road New Sharing Account.
Okay, all right. How you vote, Ms. Woxnann?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter? Ms. Wies?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Okay. We, this is a grant, we really don't need to vote on this, but with this carport being the, like the $2,900, you know, to go over our controls down there, I'd like a vote on it. We're going to spend it on deferred funds.
Okay. Which size are we in?
The 20, 20.
18 by 20.
Yeah.
It needs to be, it needs to be big, you got it.
Yeah, 18 by 20 by 6.
Yes.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Where the hell is that?
Yeah, it's on, but you know.
Oh, it's a difference, it's a difference in the roof, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And what's the price?
Oh, I think it was $2,900 to get it on something.
Yeah.
At 20% plus 350 to load and set up.
Okay.
But it was, I think it was $2,900, somewhere along in there. He's supposed to have kept the one with the price on it.
Okay, it's 18 by?
20 by 6.
20 by 6.
Mm-hmm.
18 by 20.
Yeah.
16 by 95, 15 by 95. And it's different in the steel, that's 26 gauge, that's 20, that's.
We're going to get that firm on, we got that.
That's, that's the difference in prices is the thicker metal, this is a, that's 14 gauge and. See that other one, I saw it, I knew it was a model. Yeah, that's 12 gauge, 14 gauge and maybe two of 14 gauge and that's 12 gauge. Best difference in thickness of steel. In my opinion, if you're talking about $200, $300, I'll get the heavier, I'll get the heavier grade. What's the 20%? Do you remember?
It's up in delivery, delivery's set up here, no, I don't need.
Okay, so let's try to back in here and see what it's going to cost us. You think it's 29?
I think it's 29 something, Roger.
But you don't hope it includes that?
Yeah, it's included in that, yeah.
That's included in.
I think it's always included in the 29. I think it's always included in the twenty-nine. Grant nailed to eighteen by twenty, but I don't have the price.
Yeah, what's your?
Yeah, eighteen by twenty there.
You think it's twenty-nine?
I think it's twenty-nine something.
Okay, we don't know if that includes that. Do we think we want to do this? Something's got to be done over those controls.
Yes, I think we should do it.
Okay, if we're gonna do it, I would suggest if someone, or I would relinquish the, the gavel even. Maybe would you say if we were to do it at a price not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars? And then it's twenty-nine plus three, we've got some cushion there.
Yeah.
And if it's less than that, it wouldn't make a difference anyway. But not to exceed thirty-five, just to come back. But we've got that much in the Firdow.
We'll get thirty thousand in there, I think.
I make a motion, we get the carport to cover the, cover the controls in our splash pad and the things we talked about at the workshop. At a price not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars and to use the heavy gates, the heavy gate steel.
I second that. How do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote, Jim?
Yeah.
How you vote?
Yeah.
Roger?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chair of the chairs.
And Laura, would you like to chair the meeting next month? I don't plan to be absent, I don't plan to be absent, but just for experience, just for experience. Okay, we'll try to plan, we'll try to plan for that. Okay, Margaret?
Y'all asked me also to agenda a utility program and a water tank and a sprayer for a maintenance department. I was talking with Roger Mason Auction has several trailers for auction that's coming up Saturday. I plan on going to that auction. And if y'all want me to look and see if they're reasonable and maybe bid all those up to a certain amount. I can do that. Or we can go look for a new one, but I don't think we'd price range for a new one.
What we need this trailer for?
What they want me for, and I don't, they want it because they can go out to, say, the walking trail and have a water tank on that trailer and fill up their pressure washer and be able to pressure wash the sidewalks by pumping it out of that water tank.
Or, or any of our buildings?
Or any of our buildings, yes.
Okay, let me ask you something, Margaret. Could they use that for, to spray ditches and stuff like that?
That could be the same thing as the spray a lot, yeah.
Well, that, that would be one good thing to use it for. I mean, if you get started on killing them weeds and, and ditches, it would be, you could be easily controlled by weed, by.
Yeah. And that is a needed thing.
It is, it sure is.
And the back slopes of rock, my rocky slope. You said if it's reasonable, then I know that you and Eddie are in form of equipment. Bill, I know you had some background mechanical kinds of things. What, do we know what a new one it costs? Do we know if you would know what reasonable, what reasonable means? I, I think I know in my, in my mind, if you would say if it was reasonable for your budget, if it was reasonable for Eddie and Margaret, then you'd buy it. But I don't know the cost.
I don't know what price would cost. I don't know what anyone costs me. I don't know what a new one would cost.
I said a single axle, it's a two axle, right?
Go Mason's auction site, I'll look, I'll look at it. They've got about five or six on there. One I'm not even considering, it's about three gigapounds. Someone's already up to three hundred fifty dollars in the auction, hadn't started until Saturday yet. Sometimes that used stuff will go a lot more than even a new one would go, you know? But I can get them to check, you know, what a new one would be and all.
A new one's gonna run about fifteen, sixteen hundred.
Yeah, I was thinking in the range of five to six hundred dollars would be the max that we would want to spend on the trailer, you know?
I'll try to, uh, bid at first.
Yeah.
Are we talking about metal or are we talking about plastic with a tank? You know, a lot of farmers are going plastic, but I don't know how long they have to flash and how it used to.
Those tanks, those tanks are pretty reasonable at the ag spray place and those are their own cowards. And also at Tractor Supply, they're very reasonable, the spray tanks. So we have one that we put on a four wheeler that we spray with.
How many, how many gallons?
Thirty-five gallons.
I would probably think they were looking at something like a hundred gallons.
We have a hundred and ten gallon sprayer that is new that, it's on up there about.
Is it mounted?
No, they're not on the tractor, this one is. It's ten, twenty thousand dollars, you know, we don't want to give that wrong. The Tractor Supply has some really good ones that's, you know, eighty to a hundred gallons. It's probably very reasonable. If we had the trailer, you know?
So we need, the trailer's the issue now?
Trailer's the issue that I have first.
You don't want to cut my cost, Johnny.
I don't have no idea. I'll be.
A new one ran fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars for one that we need. And I would, I would go to the auction and try that first.
Steve?
For one thing, what they want to do with it, anything under three hundred gallons is not gonna be worth it. Because if they're gonna pressure wash these buildings, these houses, they're gonna have to have a three hundred, five hundred gallon. They run anywhere, you know, five thousand, fifteen hundred if you just get it. But the trailers, you're gonna have to have a dual axle. It's gonna have to be a heavy gauge. And they're gonna run you about four thousand, four or five hundred new. Now, if you want to get the whole setup with the pressure washer thing, we're gonna buy ten thousand dollars for the steam cleaners, the five hundred gallon and the trailers. So, yeah, that's what they were asking for, was pressure wash. You can't, you can't, you can't use a pressure washer to spray ditches. It's two different, two different things. That's what they were asking for. They wanted a trailer with a tank where they could hook up to the pressure washer and then go out portable and turn the pressure washer on and grab a PECO pressure washer and wash these sidewalks and buildings. That's what he was asking for last week.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Right, that, that can run, that can run anywhere from forty-five hundred to ten thousand unless you buy a used one. I know my setup's ten thousand dollars.
I'll just borrow yours.
That's where, you know, but that's what they run it. But you can get them, like, if you get, if you get a good two or three hundred gallon at the, at the auction. I mean, you put it on trailer and then gravity feed it. But thirty gallons, a hundred, it's not gonna be enough water to do what they want. And that'll be enough to spray the ditches and stuff, but that's a whole different sprayer system. That's not a pressure washer.
Three hundred, three hundred gallons of water can weigh twenty-four hundred pounds. You'll have to have.
Yeah, the dual axle, thirty-five hundred.
You'll have to have an axle and a spring under there that can hold that much water.
I don't need.
And Randy there.
I think, I think, I think it's a good investment, whether it all got the money, I don't know about.
I need time to research it.
But, but now, I do see, I don't, I don't know that I see, I don't know that I see commercial farm operations, but I see people like any of us with this little, little tank on the back of a four wheeler for spraying, it's got a little gasoline motor on that there to spray the ditches, the weeds and things out there. We may be talking about two different kinds of apparatus. And we get that Gator bag, we can set that right over in the back of it.
Oh, yeah, right in the back.
Right in the back of it and, and do that for ditches.
And thirty-five gallons will cost you a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars of plastic. If you put it right, right back there, perfect.
Yeah. And thirty-five gallons of the loss of spray.
Oh, it is a loss.
That's what I want to need, yeah. Right now, they're concerned, I wish you, I wish you'd brought us a price when it came. We would like to, we would.
Is this, is this something we really, really need?
I don't know, a lot of places that we don't have.
How far they gonna spray the sidewalks?
Do you have a pick-up through the seventy-seven? This will be at the parts like the walking trail, but there's not a lot of places out there that we don't have a water spigot somewhere. A hose is a lot cheaper than.
That's what I, yeah, yeah. If we're not, if, if we're talking about two separate things here, the spraying versus the.
We need to spray.
Waters, the water, yeah. And the only, the only place I can, well, at least probably faucet, I start saying only thing, if we develop the George Rogers Park anymore, you may need something to spray down once, but we've got outside faucets at every one of those places.
Couple hundred foot, I was, it's a lot cheaper than that's a.
And Mr. Mason will probably have another auction sometime. If you go, keep, keep, keep your eye, keep your ear open for what they do sell for. And if we ever have to come back to these, we may have a, have a clue. But what are our feelings now? Do we want to not do this? Do we want to table it and see something next month or what do you think?
I'd say table and see it next, but you know, we'll give time to Margaret to check. And anybody else to check.
Bring us back some prices.
Yeah.
And, and do, let them, let them price both things because, again, that Gator, when it comes back, it can be used to do our ditches and everything. I'm thinking probably ditches and rations is gonna be almost important right now, is spray washing sidewalks. Okay, all right.
Y'all also asked me to bang on the back, the backhoe attachment for the John Deere. After discussion with Tim and Dallas, you know, an attachment for that John Deere, as small as it is back there, is not gonna help us any more than that Kabota does back there. So that's really, you know, and if we ever decide to trade the Kabota in, we could probably take that backhoe attachment off of it and put it on the John Deere.
Yeah, the size, the size of equipment that you got there is not that.
Yeah, it's not feasible.
You're not getting anything. You have three pieces of equipment for the backhoe.
Yeah. Okay, y'all asked me also to bring up the square and the iPad for taking payments for the water department. I do think that's a route that we need to go. It's a very inexpensive route, you know, for us to go with that. They use it at Katie's Cafe, they use it, you know.
That's the water.
That's the water. You know, you just, usually we're, but that's, I think that would be, you know, somewhere, you know, we've gone into the twenty-first century with our pumps, Katesys, and we need to go on into the twenty-first century and take a debit card.
Okay, I don't remember not having this good last.
No, it wasn't, but you had to have one with it, so.
Okay, so what?
To get the square.
Okay, so what is, Tim again about square idiots?
It's just like a little.
I know what a square idiot is, but I'm pretty sure this is not what we're talking about.
No. You set up an account with, it's online, you set up an account with Square. You put your bank account information in there, you get this, and you can buy it at Walmart, whatever you need. And that's where we bought ours at for the rec. We thought it, actually use your own iPad or phone.
Let me make a suggestion, so the iPad, what we use up there is two hundred nine unknown. It's a little receipt, that Square thing, it's a, it hooks to Wi-Fi. If we have Wi-Fi here, you don't need, you don't need your phone tablet up there, we have to use our phone. But it prints out the receipt, does everything, and eliminates a tablet. And if you get a tablet, you have a little thing, you stick it in the end of it, and you swipe a card.
Yeah, it's one of those things.
This one, we found out, this one works a lot better, more sufficient. And the customer wants a receipt, 'cause they either email you a receipt, text your receipt, or print your receipt. Now, a lot of people just rather have a print. Some take taxes and all that. But then, if you want to eliminate the pad, it's two hundred nine nine dollars for buy to Square. And it's about eight inches long or four inches wide. And you stick your card in there and you punch in how much it is, and then it'll print you out a receipt and it goes right to your bank account.
Okay, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm assuming because I'd answer my question, Square is a vendor.
Yes, sir, it's like Visa, MasterCard.
That's the question, what do you have?
Sure, it's a vendor today.
And they're a vendor through a bank or through a?
They're their own bank.
Their own bank.
They're their own bank. They're, they're, if you go to Katie's, you go to Moody's, if you pay with your credit card, you're paying, you're paying to Square. They're taking over, they never go through, on, on Fast Foods and places like that, use it 'cause they're cheaper. They charge you three and a half percent plus like ten or twenty cents per transaction. So you charge your customer four percent for using credit cards to cover your fees. And then you add those.
Jake, what's the question?
I make a motion that we do that. I mean, it would help pay, you know, some of them that is able to come in here and pay their bills and that's not able to get here before things close.
Jake going online.
Yeah, they can go online if they.
We have a motion.
Which one are we gonna get?
I suggest what Steve said, we better get an iPad and all that with the maintenance on iPad and everything else.
Two ninety-nine.
Yeah, and, and if they doing it from home, where's, where's the four percent? How, how, where do we get ours?
You just, you make up a little website, it's through Square, and they just go to that website. And then they just punch in, automatically does the four percent if you put it in there. If it's here, it should just calculate it, they owe a hundred dollars, should just punch in a hundred and four dollars. And then they slide their credit card and it comes right out of their.
I also couldn't notice if you use your debit card, there's a convenience fee of four percent charged to you. How many will use it, I don't know, you know, but we've got quite a few that would, I think.
Oh, but, but it would charge, it would charge the pay, payer, customer four percent.
Yes. If I come in, if a customer comes in and uses a dollar, Square will just deposit ninety-six cents to my account.
Okay.
If I charge a dollar four, it would charge, it would actually put a dollar point seven six cents to my account.
You charge it to them and then it prints it, and then they calculate it out here, calculate it.
If somebody uses it from home.
They go on the website.
They go on the website, they give their card number, whatever it is they give. And if it's a hundred dollars, then.
You charge it.
It shows up here, it, it, it charges a hundred and four dollars and it sends a hundred and four dollars to others.
Well, it's.
Send a hundred dollars.
And then send you the rest, and then like a dollar forty cents.
Send, send a hundred dollars to us 'cause the convenience fee goes to Square for their service.
So they making four dollars.
They're making three and a half percent plus like twenty cents per transaction.
Making money off you using their.
Yes.
They're making money off our customers.
If you know these, that's where they do something. American Express charges you over four percent to the vendor.
I would say, you know, eighty, eighty, eighty-five percent of our customers will still pay with a check or cash, you know? But that ten percent that wants to pay with these cards, they want to pay with the card.
I'm not opposed. Did we get a second? We're discussing.
No, we're discussing.
Yeah, well, we're just supposed to have a second before we get a discussion. There's a second to that motion. We don't have to vote for it, but we, we supposed to get a second before we discuss it. Is there a second to the motion?
And you said only, what, what, what would y'all think is the best way to go? If people want to pay that four percent?
We have a few that would pay that four percent. I have, our rates are already high.
Most of them would not.
We have high rates.
Well, since, since we're gonna discuss anyway. If we, if we, if we, if we went that way, 'cause we monitored for so long, if we, if we do it after. I, I wish it'd be a service. But if we're doing it for six people, is the cost of it gonna be worth it to us? Can we get out of it?
Do we get our two hundred and ninety? I think you get out of it anytime.
Yeah, you get out of it.
Anytime, you're not under contract.
No, you're not under contract, it's just whatever fur change that, if somebody wants to use their credit card, it's whatever they want plus four percent, that's it. It's just like you go onto a convenience store and they're saying you have to use five dollars or something. Here actually give you charge that if you get cash back. That's the reason why they give you cash back, 'cause they're charging the merchandise to the vendor.
Does anybody come in here and use their credit card often?
Not, well, they come in here and ask you, we don't take that.
We don't, we don't take credit cards.
We don't take credit cards. We don't have a machine to take credit cards.
Should we get that as easy or as good as we do this?
I, yeah.
It's out on that road from home, though. That, that's what, that's, your concern, your concern is.
I think.
We're going up that road from home.
See, I think that most of them would come here and go in there and pay it with their credit card, then trying to go online and set up an account and all that. Most of them would bring it in here to Margaret and say, hey, can I pay my water bill with my credit card? I mean, that's, if, that's what I would do. I mean, I would, I would see a lot of people going to do that.
Is that a second to the motion?
That is a second.[1767.34]
We have a motion and a second that we set up, uh.
Square.
Square account. And, uh, and offered as a convenience for our, our citizens to pay their water bill. I suppose they could pay any other bill that the city may have, which is none currently, but, uh. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Not anymore.
All right. The chair votes yes. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Williams?
All right. Stephen's supposed to have us at calls tonight for the, uh, next, not got it. So we'll table that until the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm pretty happy about calls.
And, uh, I have not heard back from the lady about wanting to fence around the cemetery plot. So I'm not sure that she still wants that, if she's thought different of that or what. So I guess we can also table that one until I hear from her.
Yeah. And, and I suggest she just come here and if she don't, then we'll just, the break is very well fixed to it. And, uh, my, and one of the concerns I have, I don't mind the fences, little iron fences are not a common thing in the cemetery. And, and, and an aide's going to mind mostly, but, uh, if she wants it so you can't reach over there, it's going to be way up here and I think that would be not.
It'd be awesome.
Not pleasing to look at it. It looks like a prison or something. So just.
Till I hear from her, we'll, and then all our danger.
She, you may not never hear from her.
You may.
If it's all right with y'all, could we just instruct Margaret to take that off of the agenda? And then if later there's more contact, we can always get back on. Can she take that off and keep bringing it back?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, well, the next part is the clerk. So you just, it looks like you just keep on.
Uh, I need a new computer in the back office there for me. I am down to slow, so slow, I just cannot hardly work. It's just so frustrating. Uh, our tech guys went over it, we threw it, it's a 2015 model. So the average life is about five years of it. This is what it's doing is I'm trying to put 2022 stuff in it. It's a 2015 model. It's not going to do it. We just upgraded, uh, two years ago in 2020 for the one in the front office. But this is a more than necessary expense.
Paul, is there any, is it reasonable to think that a computer is going to be good for five years?
That's what we figure, three to five years. It's the software that's, that's developing more quickly than the technology in the computer.
And it's bogging down.
So some of these software packages actually require more than what these older computers, and that's exactly what you're running into.
Bogging down.
It's not that the computer's run, getting worn out. It's that it can longer run the newer software.
I just thought that the world of tech was changing so quickly. By the time you got home with it, got a flu vaccine.
Same concept, yeah.
You hear about, uh, starting to agree, yeah.
Our tech guys are.
You got a cost?
Uh, no, our tech guys are working on a price. It'll be, that one in the front office was less than, it was around $1,500 or something like that. Not, not a lot. We get them through Dale. We get the government contract through Drell and they're not very much involved. I think the most expensive one I looked at on was about $1,500, you know, to do what we need to do.
And the government contract, who's got that? Or, or does our tech people?
Our tech people. They, they have access to it. We can over our own. They send it over to us.
So we wanted to run this back to the price or?
We ain't got time to do that. I was going to quit.
That's what I was going to say. It's just need to go ahead and do it. That's something that's important.
Does that move?
That's a motion.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. We have grid computer service in the back office. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Or he is. Chris?
Yes.
For ten?
Yes.
Sure, but she is.
Okay. We need to make a decision whether we're going to, you know, renew our contract with both the cemetery or we're going to let our maintenance staff move the cemetery.
Say that again, Margaret.
Right now, we're contracting, but our contract ran out in October.
Okay.
Uh, we'll need to either renew our contract with, um, Ashley's lawn service or our maintenance staff, since we've got extra people to. Now, whether our staff can vote for $350 a cut, you know, I don't know.
With, the thing about staff is that they're here.
Yeah, I was saying, why don't we try them for a while, see if they're here.
They're, they're here and I don't know, I know in, in the pure world of, of Caddie, all I get is need to have a caution and, and how much does it cost for them to do that, but probably in our.
I've got a problem that part of them have to deal with, so to get ready.
We ought to have, we ought to have plenty of movers to do it.
Yeah, they're supposed to bring us back.
And above that, we actually agreed to buy a push mower last month if not.
We got a weed.
So we ought to have, uh, we ought to have enough equipment to do, we got a, that, what we got a scag and if we still got a scag.
We got two, we got two scags. Two scags, a wheel weed eater, two regular weed eaters, and we're going to get a couple of, uh, push mowers.
Yeah.
Chainsaw and all that good stuff.
And John's going to get us some concrete to push them on.
Uh, well, I, I would like to, I would, I really like to.
I'll send you a meeting with the order.
Well, I don't want to step in front of Rotterdam as a mayor.
Okay, yeah, but we.
Will you go with me?
I sure will.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody?
I ain't going to step ahead of you, okay?
I, I, the least of my concerns.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Thank you for, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, good deal.
My way on the cemetery thing, I said a designated week that they do the cemetery.
Supposed to be every other week.
Every other week? Okay. That's good.
But probably before we meet again, you'll start leaving the, the fence rows and them weedy, wet plants will start coming up a few days like today.
Margaret, when we're talking about that, over there at Daddy's Park, where the trees are starting to, where they hang over.
They're working on that.
Are they working on that? I have been over there in the last couple of weeks.
You're talking about the, you're talking about the boundary fence.
Yeah, the boundary fence. Where, like when you go through and all of it's starting to hang over on that side. Did, are they going to cut those tines or?
They're going to be starting, they have got most of the tines up.
I was out there at the end of last, week before last and, and there wasn't a day.
They're getting working on it.
Those places, I'm sure there's force from here to hurt Nancy Paul City, that you couldn't get to the fence. There was that much, there was that much stuff thrown up, under brush or whatever, that much stuff we're going to do. If you didn't get to the fence.
All right, last management cleanup weeks. We need to set our three times that we're going to have our, our cleanup weeks, which would use us, you know, sometime in the spring, summer, fall, late spring, summer, fall, you know.
Because last year we did, we did.
In January, they'll do it again. We did.
January or something.
They did it again. Tell me do it, you know. We usually try to do them like the third week of the month, you know?
They have in that, the county.
It's from about first and you put it in the napkin.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the 12th of March.
Somewhere along that door there.
Okay, okay, I'll sign you. I'm gonna, okay. When is 12th of March? Okay.
That's, that's an amnesty day for having, has it still? This one out here is just.
Yeah.
I would say like April, July, and maybe August or August and July.
Four, three, two, eight, four, three, eight.
That would be doing May then.
Let me, let me suggest that the, that it, we didn't, I don't think, I don't know, remember now my can't lay, but maybe that we capture Christmases when we do one. Maybe everybody throw their Christmas jugs. We had a lot, lots of that, I think. Maybe, maybe one or more, maybe ought to be then.
Maybe like June and we have three.
June's too far off to have the first one.
It's got to be.
Well, you can still do it, except third week in April. I mean, Easter's just on Saturday and Sunday. The rest of the week, they, they won't be doing that.
April and then August or September, it'll be four months.
Third week in September.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to divide 12 by three, I'd be, it'd be April and then all, and August and December. April, August, and December.
Last week of December.
Sound good. That good, that funny? That's good.
All right. Got three more to talk.
Man, I'm ready.
No, I, I.
All right.
Y'all, I, as y'all know, the cat backhoe is down. Mr. Rudd, the thing you looked at that backhoe, he said he doesn't know, he said what the problem is, is there's been a plate slippage in the pump. He said, I can guarantee you there is metal throughout that hole. He said, in my opinion, he said, I'm not, got the prices and I'm not voting for Cat or anybody else. It will take around $30,000 to get that backhoe back up and around. He said, my opinion is the county needs to think real hard and strong about surplusing that back to the county. See if they'll let us have a dug-in or going out for some quotes on a backhoe. The rural water people that's been in here this week was telling us that sometimes like United Rental, some of the rental companies, uh, they'll surplus some of theirs and sell them real cheap to, uh, and they've been maintained, you know? Though we could probably get, say, fairly nice backhoe for that $30,000 that. And he said, that still won't guarantee your pump's going to last over an hour. If we miss them, you have to flush it all out, get all the hydraulic on flush. And he said, there's still going to be metal. And if it gets in that pump, it's going to be done within an hour. And so you probably can attest to that.
He was auctioning up there, uh, J M Woods is next month too, and they have backhoes and all kinds of stuff up there. I was looking last week when we were talking about, there was a few good, used ones for $15,000 to $20,000.
Does Scott Shaw still work with?
No, he worked with Newco's. Brandon Miller.
Oh, that's right.
Brandon Miller's, they still work with him or some else.
Some, yeah, I think Scott would go to work at the garage.
But that's something, you know, that's going to have to come back. We're going to have to have a backhoe. And I understand that the county's getting all new equipment. They may have something, you know, this was war out when we got it. Completely war out when we got it, you know, and we've, we've already spent about close between $5,000 and $7,000 on repairs. I think over since we've had it, you know, but it's just not feasible to put the $30,000 in it.
If we could get another one from the county, if they are going to circulate their equipment, uh, the last, the last few years I worked, which is never a long time ago, uh, we were on a, on a better reputation plan and a better maintenance plan than way back, you know, in the 1900s. But, uh, uh, that'd be, if they would take this one and, and trade it in or settle it or whatever, what they do with, with their surplus and let us have another surplus one.
I think you ought to go down and talk to the director.
Take John with you.
Take John with you.
Take John with me. I, uh, yeah. We got two.
That'll be our cheapest bit while we're trying to look for one, because we're going to have to have one, you know?
We got, we got two commissioners who share walks also. They want to.
Yeah.
They want to help us.
Yeah.
They will, they, they always do. Okay?
All right.
I, I, with the, I'll, I'll get in touch with the ordinance, everybody's permission, okay? We'll do that.
Y'all asked me also to check into getting our guys certified for, uh, the water courses. You have a thing on your house. This is, is through, uh, Sacramento State College in the state of California, but this is what rural water uses. You can get, uh, you can get both of our guys, the training materials and all. The first books are $160 for both of them. Then there's, after that, there'll be another $160. Rural Water will then come in free of charge and prep them for the state exam after they pass these courses online. They'll prep them for, so for about, you know, $280, you know, we can get the course materials and it's up to them after that to study and, and you, it's open book. Before you're taking the courses, you can take your test in open book. And then they're, like I say, Rural Water come in and prep them for the test.
That sounds great. Now, and you.
And they're both willing to go.
Yeah, and, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that sounds great. It cause, you know, we, the town, I mean, has been paying out too much money for that to.
Mr. Resher's.
Yeah, and his help has gone, has gone.
And we need to do that while he's here because he has to sign off on so many bad hours on each of them, you know?
Sounds great to me. But.
Are we, we're not going to make the conditions that form.
No, no, no.
If they don't, if they don't pass.
Pass them.
We do something.
You can pack, take it again in 60 days after he don't pass the state board, then take it again in 60 days. But we're only going for a class thing. That's all we need.
I'm, I'm going to guess that Dayton.
Dayton pass.
I said. Okay, shall we, what's the pleasure? Should we pursue this?
Yes.
Yes, and then the motion?
And make a motion.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Abby, Ms. Parker, he is, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Sure, but she is.
Okay. All right. Now, down some, some good news. We got official notification today.
It took you a long time to get there.
Official notification. We have been funding it up to the amount of $407,542 to, uh, the stormwater drainage repair on Snake Hole Bridge down there. We have got that funded. We got notification today. We done sent our.
Want to take that with money?
Yes.
Oh.
And not more. And we also got our puddle water system, hardening and resiliency, which includes, uh, uh, a new submersible pump, the pipe in front, the pump to the elevator storage tank, and a new generator, proventure generator for our well in the amount of $330,110. And, uh, you know, our generator is still good down there. It still works, you know? I think we should move it somewhere in town where we need a generator at, maybe the maintenance or, or, you know, I want to put, run that fire department.
I don't know that it would run that, but I think it would.
Run that maintenance.
Have that maintenance department.
We need to keep it. We need to utilize it, you know, and we can get a price when they're here with this.
Is, uh, is, do you bury our engineer on both of these projects?
Yes, sir.
And, oh, and, and something, on the.
Cliff wrote both these.
On the one second, on the one second street. Does that do anything besides the bridge? Does it not?
It pays, yeah, it pays in front of, you know, so far from the bridge and so far from the bridge on each side.
But not the whole street?
No, it won't. I paid the whole street. There's that money left over.
Hmm.
Yeah, it won't do that.
Okay. That, that intersection of Jefferson and Second and the one just, just off of the right way, just off the DOT right way, both of those are just crumbling.
I would hope that Kevin Parker did construction, let him come down, help him.
Yeah, yeah.
We should get our street streets back with that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, okay, Jefferson Street and Jackson.
Is stopped.
Are stopped.
Are in the road. I hope we're in the road for sure.
We got the plans on those yet?
Cliff has them. I don't, no, I don't know.
Are they complete though?
I know.
Okay.
We're continued on grant, whether or not they. They got it.
I want to come back to that. Then we'll start, give y'all an update on the, on the thing, uh.
And it's all good. But we're very excited about this. And we should be here for our COVID preseason, you know?
I would like for you, what you're talking about, the one on the, on the Bree Center, make sure the way we get, ever have where we pave out, that we encompass as much of our right of ways we can. Let's not just pave right down.
Right where the road.
Right in the middle of the road. That's right. And, and when we get another stopper or something that does that, go in that pine ear, pave it out as, wherever we can. That, that'll get water off of, get it in the ditches.
Yeah.
That's it with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Parker? I don't have anything. Don't have anything? Ms. Walker's now?
No, she don't have.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
No.
Okay, uh, oh, I skipped Ms. Carter, I thought. Ms. Carter?
No, I'm the thing.
Let me, let me share with y'all a couple of things. And one of those that, that I just said, we're, let's make sure we encompass as much of our right of ways we can. The other thing is on that Jefferson Street, when we start to pave it, could we ask Cliff to make sure that it's going to be a little more engineering and if it, if it takes our grant, I know we can't do it, but rather where you go down Jefferson and turn into the Boston Paddis, that street is planted all the way on over to Forest Avenue. If we could, if we could do, when, when that 400 comes through there, it's going to be more dangerous and more dangerous for somebody to come down from Boston Paddis to 77. And then sometime I believe to do is just turn and go one block and turn right back on the Buster Road. So you won't creep out, creep down, creep back in. And, and I think that, I think that we could go ahead and open it up from where it makes that turn back into the ball field on over to, uh, Forest Avenue, that that would be good. Is it all right for Margaret to ask Cliff to give us a report on what that would offer?
Yes.
Okay, the other thing is, the, the uh, building that the uh, Roger Stenford donated to us, uh, I was invited a, a while back and was not able to be with them when they was there, but this afternoon, uh, or earlier today, we were calling and said, we're gonna come out by if you'd like to, uh, that building is uh, uh, it seems very solid, uh, but I think we ought to have a development plan now. Inside it, it has a hot water heater and it has a gas stove, some apartment sized stove. Somebody can't go there and, and, and cook this thing like that, it's a woman of kind of thing. It does have a microwave, women's bathroom, the inside is sealed, not part of the board, but that press board.
How does it?
OSB, it probably needs to be painted and things like that. I would think if we're gonna use it uh, for something in the future, we may not want to put carpet on it. If somebody drops something on that thing down there, have a dinner, whatever you want to, you can strip it if you have to, so, water, strip it, whatever you need to. We may want to make sure, uh, and, and I'm saying all that, maybe we could get Cliff to look at it and see if it, kind of, help us there and tell us if anything that we need to do to bring it up any kind of standard. They have put new electric in, uh, and it was permitted, they put new electric in since the storm. The box is labeled and things like that, but uh, if we use it for anything else somewhere, we need to think about putting some sides on it, putting some windows in, and put some heating and tubing in, some things like that. Right now, it can be used just like it is for a lot of things in warm weather. So that's just, uh, uh, I think it's a good find for us, uh, if we, if we put some other things to it, we still gonna have a, we gonna have a, a, a very nice building for, for maybe not such a big investment, but that's not something we need to do right now, but we do need to, we do need to think about how we're gonna use it. My idea is, it's, it's a good thing if we use it, if we let it sit on the corner and go down, it was not a good idea to exit it, uh, because. And that's what I have.
Was that your stomach in here?
It might be, it's a lot of pub.
Mr. Paul, you have any words of wisdom to share with? Mr. Carter?
I think. Sure, one, one thing I want to mention with these, uh, going back to the employee phones, just want to remind everybody that anything that occurs on those phones is a public record.
Yeah, and we probably, we'd be well advised to remind our employees of those are public records.
Exactly, everything coming up, an off color text, to a picture, to a web searches, whatever's on a, the public phone, would be subject to a public record request.
I'll make sure they know that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for reminding us of that, uh.
And that, Jeff, they don't need to get in a fuss with their wife, right?
That's right, they, they need to keep it straight with the public.
Okay, I got it. Kid.
Yeah, yeah, I think Urban Meyer and company would probably tell us that they some things that you don't need on the phone.
That's right.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Carter, we sorry that you couldn't be with us tonight, who follows way, and we'll see you in, is it two months? Couple of months?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay.
That's right, I appreciate the combination.
All right, thank you. Steve, did you have anything?
Well, we started baseball twenty-eight.
Okay, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight. So first inning.
Okay, all right, well, we appreciate everybody being here. If nothing else, we'll stand adjourned.
Thanks.
What is that?